The regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission. And members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission.
Excuse me. Uh, excuse me. On items appearing on the agenda are requested to complete a speaker's card and file it with the secretary. Looks like we're not going to have a lot of that tonight. Cards are available in the lobby. Speakers should state their name and address for the record, and I'd like to know whether you live in the city or not. And limit your comments to three minutes or less. Comments must be directed to the commission, not the audience. While Planning Commission is in session, all in attendance are expected to maintain order and decorum and to obey the orders of the chair. I think the audience will be quite decorous this evening. And Sherri, could we have a roll call, please?
Chair Qualisi.
Yes, here.
Vice Chair Nolan.
Here.
Chair Commissioners Merk.
Here.
Corbin.
Here.
Powers.
Here.
Lottis.
Here.
Jagiello is absent.
Very good. And for the record, we'd all like to welcome our newest Planning Commissioner, Catherine Lottis, right here at the, as you're viewing from, from home, she's at the right end of the table there next to Sherri. She has a great deal of experience in this kind of business, and we all look forward to sharing her wisdom and experience.
Thank you for your welcome, and I look forward to working with everyone.
Excellent. And we'll do the pledge of allegiance. Kathy, would you like to lead us?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The next agenda item is public communications. The time set aside during the Planning Commission meeting for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission and will generally be referred to staff and/or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no action can be taken at this meeting. Is there anyone that wishes to speak during public communications? All right, we'll close that part of the meeting. We have a consent item, and that is minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission August 1st, two weeks ago. And I'm wondering, are there any commission members that have corrections, or additions, or changes to the minutes? Very good. I'd like to entertain a motion then to approve the minutes of August 1st.
I'll move to approve the minutes.
All right, I'll make a second to the motion.
Very good. Any discussion? Let's have a roll call, Sherri.
Merk.
Yes.
Corbin.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Qualisi.
Yes.
Powers.
Abstain, I wasn't here.
Lottis?
Abstain, I was not on the commission. Thank you.
All right, so the motion passes, four zero. All right, discussion items. We have, the first item is determining a list of items for discussion with the city council at our joint meeting on September 11th. And I'm wondering what the pleasure of the commission is. Are there particular topics you'd like brought up during that time? I have a couple myself, but would entertain those from anyone else. Yes, Bobby?
Well, I would like to bring up the issue of the long range vision for the city of Ojai. I think that the issues that we are interested in talking about, that we suggested, would be better discussed in those terms, as opposed to taking every issue by itself. And it would be really nice to start to establish a framework, to start to establish a list of priorities that the city council can then prioritize their year with, and then we can talk about how these different issues fit into a long range vision plan.
Okay, so we can, we can ask the council for a long range vision, or at least-
How do, how do we start to envision the long range vision?
Yeah, okay. Kathy?
I just wanted to make a comment in support of Commissioner Corbin, and I wanted to share that it was our Planning Commission several years ago who actually initiated the joint meetings because, and our question was, what was the long term or the vision for the city? Because we would get various items that we needed to address from city council, but it was kind of all over the place, and we needed like a master direction. So I, I just put that, I want to include that in support of Commissioner Corbin, that we may want to ask that. And then I think a lot of the items that we see listed here will kind of fall under that, and we can prioritize. I mean, I think I know some of them are, you know, of course, water and fire, and you know, things that are eminent, but there's some other things, you know, as far as sustainability and housing, and how does that all play into-
Parking.
Exactly. So that's my comment.
Okay, Ray?
I have a couple comments. Looking at this list, affordable housing, the Sustainable Living Research Initiative, which is also in regards to housing and community design, and cluster housing are all pretty much the same topic. They all fall within each other. So if we are to speak to the council and the joint committee about the affordable housing, I think there's a bigger scope to that, or there's a apparatus, the SLRI, that it can nest in, that discussion can nest in.
Subcategories of broader heading.
Yeah. So those, those three items seem to be the same topic. The other thing that, that I want us to consider as a commission is, in our own discussions and with our, in the joint meeting, to be aware of what initiatives the council has already put forward. The Transocean Ojai meetings that have been happening, I'm going to say this wrong, but I'm going to try this here, Water Management.
Watershed Progressive.
Thank you, Watershed Progressive. That's already in motion. So there's some things we don't need to reinvent the wheel because they're already happening. We actually have to hop on the carriage and inform ourselves, and then join in the conversation from that point, from an educated point of what initiatives are already moving forward.
Do you have citations for these things so that we can educate ourselves?
I do not. Well, I don't have a citation. There is an article that was written, and I also filmed the Transition Ojai meetings, which should be going up on the city website quite soon, I believe. And, and there's an article written that's on the Ojai Hub about the Transition Ojai meetings, what occurred, and what that initiative is about, and what that memory-
I was thinking the SLRI might have some written.
Oh, in terms of, yeah, well, we, we, didn't you send that out to all of the commissioners, Kathy, at one point?
Yeah, we, we actually had a presentation here at Planning Commission. All the city council members have received information. There's a, you know, packet with some samples and explanation and what have you, a description. But I also wanted to mention about the transition design, kind of the ultimate goal of that is, is what is the community, I mean, it is, it includes the city, of course, because the MOU is with the city, but as was made evident, it includes the entire valley. But ultimately, some of the things we're talking about does affect the valley. So in a way, that may be the mechanism or the, what's the word that I want? The workshop, the mode or means of defining what, what does the community want, what's the vision for the city ultimately would be coming out of that.
Are you saying within the-
Transition design?
Within the transition designs, those conversations can happen, and possible incubator projects, the SLRI being one of them, is that what I'm hearing you say?
It could be, but I think, yeah, what I'm saying is that, because the city does have that MOU, and it does include, of course, the city and beyond the city, meaning the valley, that that process actually will ultimately, I think part of the goal is, is to come up with what is it, what do people want? How do we work together? How do we create what the community is about? How do we become sustainable?
Finish my thought.
Yeah, go ahead.
So given that, and that those initiatives are already moving forward, and as we know the joint meetings go really quickly, and that's a large topic, maybe it's important for us to kind of narrow down, possibly something the council hasn't specifically been looking at, because these other, there's other things that have been getting a lot of traction already. So we may want to brainstorm and look at this list to see, okay, what, what isn't being given a lot of attention, and bring that up. Or what council would like help from us for, with the initiatives that are already in motion.
Okay. Sherri, do you have copies of any documentation that's been already circulated?
For the SLRI?
For SLRI, or, or other things that have been discussed here? If so, could you make those available to Catherine so that she can-
Oh, sure.
Have the same reference documents that the rest of us will have.
After the meeting?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Oh, not right now, of course not.
Happy to do that.
Okay. Bobby?
Well, I, I just want to say that I don't think you can just say, oh, Carnegie Mellon's going to, going to do these transition design workshops, and we'll figure out what the community wants. I, I think that issues will come up, but I think, I think the city needs to think about it too, and I think the city needs to play a leadership role in at least starting to define areas of discussion. They're maybe not going to go in the way that we might think they are, but it, you can't just like say, well, Carnegie Mellon and the community will figure this out, they'll help us figure it out. But I think it's important, I think it's important that the city also tries to structure, it's that we try and structure our goals in that same kind of framework.
I think, since we are, we're talking here about things that we want to discuss with city council, and asking, asking for whatever consensus there might be on the council as to these goals, I think it's probably the right way to go at it. Because what we're going to take on in the main is things that the city council wants us to do, and so we need to figure out what those are. There are a few here, most notably, I guess, Title X cleanup and the design guidelines. Landscape standards, I noticed, was, was listed here as having been discussed, I guess that was the special meeting on August 7th. And I thought we had been through the landscape standards already. We certainly have been through water-wise standards, but Kathy, you're the expert in that area. Is there more that, that we need to discuss with the city council and let them tell us where they want us to do something?
A couple of things come to mind, because I was on the committee that actually worked on that several years ago. But the one area that didn't get addressed was, there's some general guidelines that I kind of feel are outdated, as far as like requirements for how many plants and the percent of plants. And, you know, you could say that's kind of minor, but I think, to me, the important part of the landscape is, number one, it uses water, it potentially does, but most likely does. Number two, it actually can help capture stormwater and filter pollutants. Number three, it actually helps, you know, clean the air, can sequester carbon, release oxygen. So to me, you know, and it's beautiful, or it should be. So to me, I feel like it's a really important part of the city. Now, another thing that we did mention was about how much time we wanted to put into it, because how much impact are we getting for the amount of work we're putting into modifying it? In other words, how many projects come through the city per year as far as-
For where there's a landscape plan required, for example?
Yeah, and it's very minimal, but at the same time, that is the one mechanism where the city can have, make an impact. The other thing that I've thought of too, and I know this had come up, and this is part of our water-wise discussion, you know, it came up about, oh, should we eliminate lawns or put a moratorium on lawns? And, and we kind of went back and forth, and I said, well, I think there's some other more efficient ways to do it, because you could have a lawn that's low water use. But we may want to consider, especially based on the fact that we may be, well, most likely will be going into the fourth stage with the drought, as there presently in the 2015 round of the MWLO, the Modified Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance mandated by the state, there's a, they delegated a percentage number of, I don't want to get too complicated here, but the evapotranspiration rate. Right now, it's .45% for commercial, which is more restrictive, and it's point, I think it's 5.5 for, I could be wrong on that, but close enough, for residential. So in other words, you're basically allowed to have a little more water use in residential. We may want to cut the commercial one back, even restrict it more, and we may want to bring the residential one in line with the commercial. I mean, we'd have to look at, what does that mean, and what's, what's the happy percentage number where you actually are going to see an impact? But that's, to me, is something we may want to consider. And I would be-
It's a reasonable question to ask if the council wants us to go look at that.
Right. And so, and that kind, that ties in with the landscape standards, and-
Now, the landscape standards themselves are in Title X, right? I think it's part of, it's part of 10-2 zoning?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So anyway-
So that also will come up in the first item?
So if they give some direction, I would be happy to, and I know I've done this more than once, but I have a lot of my notes, but I go back and go through it and do kind of an edit of the standards and say, you know, make some notes where I think a change could be made that would be, you know, more beneficial to the community overall, whether it's water or whatever. And then bring it back to the commission, or if somebody wants to work on it with me, that's fine. So however we deem-
But the first, the first step would be, does the council want us to go that direction?
Right. And they do have it as an assignment, you know, with these first three-
Landscape standards, I'm not sure what's in there.
Right.
So I would tend to ask first, what is it you want? And would this be a useful part of that?
Yeah. So you're hitting on exactly what, why, and I added it to the list here, and for exactly the reasons you're talking about. On August 7th, we had the special meeting focused on water issues and the drought, and during several of the discussions, including the water-wise measures coming back, council, different, various council members had mentioned that, you know, well, Planning Commission was going to look at the landscape standards, and, and we were going to look at the Santa Barbara landscape standards and see what, what information there was, and they mentioned most of the things Commissioner Nolan talked about as well, the whether to encourage lawns to be reduced or eliminated. And so, I will say at this point, I'm not 100% clear on what, you know, or what exactly the focus is, which is why we added it here, thinking we can get that clarification from, from them there.
I think that the clarification would be very useful for us. As far as design guidelines, we have talked about that already as a commission, and we recognize that there are four or five different sets of design guidelines, many of them overlapping in the city. And the way I would choose to ask of the city council is to say, do you want us to look at creating maybe a single set of design guidelines with some appendices that apply to specific areas, and try to get to where all the appendices are covering disjoint areas, rather than giving individual parcel owners two or sometimes three sets of design guidelines to try to, to work in? Is that-
That's what we discussed in-
I think so, yeah.
And we asked if staff could do a matrix of the different ones, so that is something that the city council has to-
And that's why they're requesting resources to go do that matrix, I guess.
Pass to approve that.
Okay. Yes, Ray?
At the risk of this being a non sequitur, but I was contacted yesterday, I think, by someone who's doing some, an educational pamphlet or a website, and it was about landscaping, and they were asking me, we want to explain to people what the regulations or codes are regarding bioswales and ponds in our front yard, and rain, rain capture, and how deep can they make the pond? I consulted with Kathy. I don't know where you got that info, but I'm curious if, but I'm curious if that's up to date, or that needs to be revised, because as more and more people are maybe redesigning their landscape, they need to really know what they're able to do, in terms of rainwater harvesting and storm catchment.
That, that, basically, a lot of that is addressed in the landscape standards with the MWLO. And, you know, if we felt like, you know, maybe we have a one-page with some guidelines, we could always make that suggestion to city council, or, you know, ask if they would like us to do something like that. So more people would actually be motivated to do it. And I agree, and I, part of our discussion, you know, in the past about the water-wise measures, whether it's in the landscape or, you know, conservation measures in a, in a structure, was, once again, how many projects actually come through the Planning Commission? It's really out in the general public, and people that already have something and want to make a shift, and they're not going to pull a permit, so there's really, you know, they're not obligated to do it. How could we educationally-
It's more of an education campaign.
Right. And so maybe the very thing you just brought up, like a one-page guideline, and there's guidelines out there, and some of the things that I shared with you are by code or the recommendations that are kind of universal throughout the country. But, you know, maybe we do one for Ojai, and it's on the, the website or under the landscape standards. And then once again, anyone could access it, and now we're actually educating and hopefully getting people to participate on a volunteer basis.
That would certainly-
Yeah.
That would, that would hit one of my important topics, which is that the rules that we have within the city here should be clear, understandable to the average citizen, and written down. And written down, including, you know, a legal basis for it. So if we had a flyer, and it said, this about bioswales, this is where we talk in the code about bioswales.
And then have references and-
Yeah, that kind of thing, right. Okay, well, that leaves us Title X.
Commissioner Chair.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Please go ahead, Catherine.
So I just have, my one thought about the list is, I, you already have design guidelines, and I assume that includes downtown design guidelines? Is that correct?
Yes, there's several places downtown where several sets of design guidelines apply.
And I, I would like to add downtown land use issues, downtown land uses, as an overall concept in terms of looking at what's coming in, what are, who are the new uses, are we getting out of kind of balance between what's resident-serving or what might be primarily resident-serving versus tourist-serving versus kind of an accumulation of liquor-related uses and so forth. And I would, I think that over the last year, when we see what new uses are, they're all basically one kind of use, from what I see. And I just think a discussion of what's going on in the downtown, the balance of uses, the diversity of uses, the purpose of all those, what we would like to see down there, and ways to perhaps deal with the direction that the uses are going, if they're, if it's only subject to the market demand, what's happening versus looking at what is possible in terms of regulations. And I think that those two things go together, at least if you separate out the downtown as a specific area to talk about.
You can, you can go to the city website, I think, and find all the design guidelines right now.
Yes.
But I'm not, I'm not positive about that. I've found several of them.
I, well, that was, I think, I think I have it, yes.
Oh, got it, okay. I think, I think that's a useful discussion. I also think we're at the point where we have enough to talk about for a five-hour meeting, not a one-hour meeting.
Right. I, I think what she brought up is really viable and a really important way to look, I think that's the huge issue on the divisioning of the town. I think that if you understand how businesses work, and it's not just here, it's the nature of the marketplace these days, you'll understand why the businesses in towns are becoming unbalanced. And it's based on what you can do and actually make money off of. And, you know, the people who are actually coming in to start businesses is very interesting to look at, too. You have to look at the money, which we don't necessarily do, but it's an important part of the visioning. That's why that school parcel is so important. It's the opportunity on a seven and a half acre parcel to think about how we, how we increase the economic viability of our town. Right now, as far as I understand, the main support and the main source of income in town comes from the Ojai Valley Inn.
That's, that's the largest taxpayer in town, I think.
Correct. And so we need to think about, I mean, as a business model, to have one large client is always a bad idea. So we need to look at, and, you know, and we need, obviously, water is the crux of all of these things, but we need to look at what else we can do to bring in a viable taxpayer, and to bring in uses and population that can support businesses, because that's kind of what the problem is right now. And not only are you getting all sort of one type of business, and it's all food-related, basically, and alcohol-related, because it's one thing people can't buy online. But, but, and it's not just happening here, it's happening everywhere. But I think that, you know, there are other types of things, whether they're educational or tech-related, that we could look at and try and attract into our town that would change that equation a little bit. And so it's important, the design guidelines, you know, should we make it yellow or purple? Well, that's one thing. But what the actual things are that we need in town is a really important discussion. And, you know, it affects business and housing and parking and everything else. And, and that is where we need to have a vision for where we want to go with town. I mean, it doesn't matter, we can have all the ordinances and codes till we're blue in the face, but if we're only going to make money with, you know, breweries and whatever, then we're going to have an unbalanced town, and we don't have enough population to support necessarily all the businesses. I mean, that was a conversation Ray tried to start about, as a small town, do we limit the number of different types of businesses and different categories? Our mayor said it's complicated. Yeah, it is, but it's a really important topic and has some viability. So there, there, the, the way the town goes over the next, I mean, you could do nothing, and, you know, it'll just kind of come and move and go up and down. But if you really want to create something on the basis of what we have here, which everybody thinks is pretty phenomenal, we need to direct it, and we need to look at it, and we need to figure out how, as leadership, we can make some of these things happen.
I think maybe it might be appropriate to ask if the council sees ways that we can help encourage the right kinds of business. When the mayor says it's complicated, I think one of the things he's talking about is, you're going to get a lot of legal pushback if you start trying to limit or eliminate certain kinds of otherwise legal businesses within the city.
Well, let me just tell you that when I got my beer and wine license, which was in the first time, maybe 2010-ish, I was told that the number of licenses are determined by the population of- by the population of the city, and that technically we were supposed to have eight here. However, we were number-
And that doesn't count any of the tourists, I presume.
We were number, no, and we were number, like, thirty-one, and that was in 2010. And then, you know, they put conditions and try and, like, manipulate to say why you should have one, two. It's a money-making device.
Well, I, I think, I think the tourist economy is, is clearly dominant right now here. If you want a, a good demonstration of that, just look at the central core, and who, who of the businesses there are suffering because the Oaks has been closed for going on nine months now. And that's a source of outside folks who are within easy-walking distance of everything in the town center. And when and if that reopens, we might see some unexpected, maybe, reawakening of economic activity in the center.
Well, I just want to say that this is probably the best year we've had since we've been here since 2009. So business is good. I mean, we're not closing because business is not good. We're closing because it's, like, turned into a monster that I'm too old to deal with. But that's a whole other thing. So we, we do have business in town, but we need to figure out what is the best kind of business for our town. And, and that's, those are things that we really need to talk about.
And see, and see if the city council feels like determining that and controlling it through us or otherwise.
I think that's the whole point of this transition design team, is to look at those big issues. And, and also, you know, look at a lot of big issues, like, other, not just economic viability, water, but annexation of the unincorporated parts of the valley into the city of Ojai, and really just absolutely everything, including how our city is structured.
Okay, well, we have, we have a list of James, four or five things right now. I think we'd better prioritize them, because I doubt that we'll get through any one of them within an hour. And so I'm, I'm wondering, is there a, a sense of the commission here? We've talked about design guidelines, we've talked about visioning and a general, I don't know if you'd call it a general plan update, but something that would inform a general plan update, perhaps?
Well, it's gotta be, it's different than a general plan. We're talking about a vision, and a vision, it has money basis, too, as well as what you think you'd like.
Okay.
It has to make practical sense. I don't think a general plan, a general plan is more general. I mean, our design guidelines are pretty general.
Yeah, I have, I can comment on that. So visioning is normally a part of the general plan process. And you do want to do that kind of upfront, because, you know, you, you have, you talk about what people want in their community, and you have different sets of, of issues or elements that you need to deal with. And so from the vision, you develop your policies, and your policies then need to translate to implementation, which is the zoning code. And so, so the visioning for the city should be part of the, any general plan update. But, and I just had one other comment on the transition Ojai. I did go to the meeting that Ray filmed, and it sounds like a great project, but, you know, that project is being conducted by Carnegie Mellon, and it doesn't have boundaries, and it's not going, going to be run by the city. And so, I mean, I think it's got great potential and involves the whole valley. But it's really going, it's an anthropological study conducted by Carnegie Mellon, basically is what it is. The, and so the city is saying, yes, we'll, you know, with the MOU, but there's no, there's no city funding of the project at all. So I see visioning for within the city boundaries, boundaries as something that could be conducted, that should be more appropriately conducted by the city, and very appropriately done as a part of the general plan update. And so I just wanted to make that distinction.
For those of, of us that don't know Catherine that well, she has had experience in city planning and as a community development director in other places bigger than Ojai.
Assistant director, assistant director.
So, thank you. Yes, I see Luke is still among the missing, and that's sad. I'd like to see him here. All right, so, we've talked about visioning, we've talked about affordable housing in all of its aspects, landscapes, design guidelines. Where do we put priority on this? Because I think we're going to be able to get one thing done and say to city council, what do you want us to do with that? I'd be happy if we had more frequent joint meetings with city council to get their guidance more frequently. But we have what we have right now, and I think it's important that we decide what we'd like to discuss first with city council.
I think we need to ensure that we have funding from the council for this design guidelines update, because we've, we've talked about that, and we're pretty clear on what we want to do there. And that could be a really short discussion. That's just like, is this okay or not? And then we-
And, and if it is okay, to what extent is it okay?
Yeah. How much are they willing to?
That's fine. The, the Title X cleanup, I have Title X here, by the way, right there, printed, double-sided. It's quite a large load of paper. Most of it, though, is Ten, Title X, Chapter Two, which is zoning regulations. And the rest of it, I think we can dispense with fairly quickly if, if we will all do that. And, you know, read, read through it. Does it make sense? Are all the references internally consistent? That kind of thing. I think each of us could take on a chapter or two. Ten dash two is going to be a big load and probably take two or three people to go through it. And I'm not sure, I'm not sure that we need to ask the city council if they want us to do that. I think they have said so already.
Yeah, the only reason I had it listed there was in case we wanted to ask for resources to do so, but we can-
Yeah, my inclination would, would be to see what the council, what the commission can do first, and then if we need help with the rest of it. But it is our, it is our area of responsibility, and I think we ought to take it on. There is a piece of it, though, that is indeterminate at this point, unless I missed a vote of the council. In, I can't remember if the, if the council approved all of the cleanup of Title Nine?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
BAB is reviewing it at their next meeting, and it'll probably come back to council the month following. So we're still a couple months out.
So in September sometime, okay.
Well, probably October it'll be to council.
Okay. The, the reason I ask that question is that part of the cleanup of Title Nine, recommended by the BAB, is to take several chapters of Title Nine and put them in Title X. So we may have additional work to do if the council approves that, that modification of the code. But in the meantime, and we can come back to this as we get farther in tonight, but I'd like to, I'd like to get people started on a general cleanup of Title X, and make that, at least for the moment, not something that we plan to discuss with the city council. I think one or two or three of the other things that we've talked about are more important in terms of our needing guidance from council on what they want done. So we have affordable housing, design guidelines, landscape. What else did we discuss here?
Yeah, basically, we had, we had said housing with subcategories. And so, as, as Ray had pointed out, if you go down the list that the Planning Commission has suggested, there's one, two, three, four, I think there's like five items, and potentially something else that might overlap, addressing housing. There's like emergency housing, accessory dwelling unit, cluster housing, SLRI, which is not just housing, but potentially could handle some housing, and then, of course, affordable housing. So that could almost be like-
Right. We note, note under there, it says need council approval before we work on these items. So maybe, maybe that's a short discussion to say, do you want the Planning Commission to look at these, at these myriad subtopics under housing?
Right. Once we've finished the, the three items that they have actually assigned to us.
And the first item, I think, well, I think we need to finish it before we get into this.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
But I think, I think that we probably don't need to ask if they want us to do the first item, the cleanup. But the design guidelines and landscape standards certainly seem to me like things that, that are worthy to ask council, what's your direction to us? And then, on deck, we have housing in many facets, and do you want us to work on that? Would that work for everybody?
Works for me.
Okay. Well, let's try that, James.
Got it.
Do we want to mention the visioning, though?
Yeah, oh, yeah, the visioning, yes.
That maybe, you know, it's not going to probably happen at this joint meeting, but maybe it's something, because we have talked about the general plan update, and I know Luke had mentioned it at one point also. So, James, you may have some more information as to where that's going or where it is in the process. And then, of course, as Kathy had mentioned, maybe we can be part of that visioning process.
That, I think, might be the appropriate way to approach it. Does the city council see a role for the Planning Commission?
Right.
As opposed to individual commissioners as individual citizens to work on a vision that could predate a general plan update?
And I'll just add, I wish I had a better answer for that. What I can say is the general plan update is probably one of the biggest priorities for council, community development, the city as a whole, Planning Commission. And it's one of the priorities on our list, and it's an item that Luke had started to make some progress on. So it's a little bit in flux, but it's one of the ones that we're going to get right back on. So I expect, before the end of this year, that we're going to get really going on it. But originally, we were hoping for September, October, and now it's probably pushed back a month or two.
Yeah, okay. Maybe, maybe a better way to ask a question of council is, do you see a role for the Planning Commission as a commission to contribute to that visioning, and then ultimately the general plan update? And, and is there also a role for commissioners as individual citizens? And what would that role be? Because I don't, I don't personally know right now if there are community meetings planned, if there's some sort of-
There would be, yeah.
Educational outreach, whatever. And that could, that could be a fairly short discussion, I think.
And then depending on how this general plan goes, in a way, are we, I mean, I know we need to address, you know, the three items that the city council has already assigned to us, but, you know, everything else kind of falls under the general plan.
Sure.
The direction could change, and-
Absolutely, yeah.
So we don't want to overdo something that's going to have to be redone, you know, in the next year.
Right.
Maybe we do, but most likely we don't.
So I do have a question. So is the general plan, any general plan work in the budget for this, this fiscal year?
Yes. And I think that is on one of the items. I, I thought I had it here, but I guess not. I want to say it's, that we budgeted a large portion, like, $150,000 or thereabouts. Don't hold me to the exact number, but we budgeted that this fiscal year.
Okay.
I, I know that-
This, the fiscal year we're in. We were expecting to get going September, October of this year. And even with this kind of delay here, I think we're still going to do it before the end of this calendar year, but definitely during this fiscal year.
I know there, there was a line on my building permit for remodeling my home that said general plan update. And I'm kind of hoping those funds were fenced and will be contributing to that effort.
Those are the funds.
Yeah, okay. So do you, you have enough now to-
I do.
Go ahead with a-
We'll bring it back. So we actually have one more Planning Commission meeting before the joint meeting, but it's a full agenda, which we will talk about later. So we'll bring it back just for one last, you know, five-minute discussion.
September 5th or so, something?
Yeah, September 5th. But, but I, you know, that was very helpful to get ready for that meeting, so.
Okay. Yes, Ray?
One of the things I'd like to get clarity on in the joint meeting is, is very specific to-dos. Some of our languaging, like affordable housing or sustainability, they've become memes, and they're kind of meaningless. There's really, in the city, there's really no such thing as affordable housing. It doesn't exist. If we want it to exist, and, and, and then that's all relative. Well, affordable to whom? And, and what scale are we looking at? And what marketplace are we looking at? So if we're going to say affordable housing, I want to, you know, really get direction on, okay, what does that mean? I don't want to hear affordable by design, because it encompasses so much. There's the land, there's the building, there's the permitting fees, you know. Are there waivers to permitting fees? It can be, it's a big discussion. So, you know, I'm, I'm kind, at this point, cringing whenever I see affordable housing written anywhere.
You realize affordable is a legal term, and it's based on the local economy. So maybe it would be good to, to make, make that clearer and, and have some educational outreach, so that if people want to talk about affordable housing, we can all talk from the same set of real data.
Yeah. Santa Barbara has done a lot of affordable housing, and they have a lot of different ways that it's done. And then that might be an interesting thing to look at. I think that might be more appropriate than looking at their landscape, since their climate's so much different than ours is. But, you know, they're, everything from, and I'm not quite sure how they're subsidized and how they're set up, but I know every building project, I have a friend now buying a condo, and they're, they do lotteries for units that would sell for a million dollars, they're going to sell for $300,000. And, you know, which is affordable for Santa Barbara. But then they also have low-income housing as well. So they've done a lot of things, some of it, I think, is private, some of it is funded from, I'm not even quite sure where, there's a developer that's done a lot of affordable housing projects. And I think there's a lot of information out there that would be good to have, to give us a better sense of what that actually means.
That, that and the real data for what does, what is the legal definition of affordable or moderate income or low income or very low income, just as examples, what does that mean in this zip code? Or whatever the, the statistical area is for which that is defined?
And it's-
Quite a general plan, too. I mean, indoor housing element, which is part of the general plan.
Yes.
Housing element.
Yeah, we have a housing element.
Yeah, there's a-
There.
So there's going to be a lot of that information, I think, that you're looking for.
And, and, you know, and the conversation also encompasses alternative materials that are used, that are less expensive, or models that if someone builds or, or does additions or remodels that, let's say, are net zero, or they put, and they put in certain kinds of landscapes or, or gray water, that there's, there's waivers or incentives where permits are less money, so it makes it more affordable, you know. People that are being proactive.
As a, as a former member of the Building Appeals Board, I would have to agree with you, those are good topics. At the very least, I think this commission had better meet with the Building Appeals Board, because many of the things that you're talking about have to do with how structures are built, not what's allowed on a particular piece of ground, which is really our focus. And so maybe we can arrange for a joint meeting with the BAB at some point.
Yeah, we've spoken about that.
See if there's useful things we could do together. But if we're going to be talking about things to discuss with council, I think we could ask, would you like us to do that? But that's a very short discussion with a yes or no answer. And, and if we take it much farther, we're going to have to get other people involved, I think.
Mr. Chair, I'd also like to point out that we do have affordable housing in town. You probably just aren't aware of it. Montgomery Oaks up here is an affordable housing project. Fulton Street, Olive Mill Road there, that's all affordable housing. Fulton Street, Olive Mill Road there, that's all affordable housing. None of it's been built recently, those are all fifteen, twenty-year-old projects.
Whispering Oaks is...
Whispering Oaks is senior housing.
That's county-owned, I think, but I'm not positive.
I think it might be in the city, but I'm not sure. Anyway, there are projects out there, but they've all been occupied for years, so it, it, it's not like housing is available if you're in an affordable situation.
Okay, well, let's move on to, to item three, process and recommendations for error correction and minor revisions of Title X. As I said, I'd like, I'd like to, to have some volunteers here. I'm, I'm happy to work with, with one or two others and try to get through chapter two, the big, the big piece of, of this, which is zoning regulations. But there are, what, fifteen chapters or so, I think?
We have a list of the chapters I'll hand out.
Yeah, that would be good. And, and as a first pass, I think what we need to do here is read through it, see if it makes sense to you as it stands. Read all of the internal references and citations and see if they are correct. I've done, done this on some other parts of the code and found places that needed to be corrected and worked on Title IX, Chapter 15, when I was a member of the building appeals board. So it's useful stuff, if for no other reason than we're back to when a citizen comes into City Hall and walks up to that desk where, where they meet with Sherri. Is it, are all the rules, first of all, discoverable? Because if you talk about fences, hedges, and walls, you're going to find some in Title X and you're going to find some in lots of other places that, that ought to be fixed. Are they clear and understandable, and are they written down so that a person who wants to have some sort of transaction with the city or permission from the city to do something can understand what the rules are? And they apply to everybody, the same rules. So what do you think?
Is, is that the checklist we were talking about?
No.
Quite a few months ago?
Well, it, it certainly could be one of several checklists, I'm not sure. If you want to build a new residence, here, here are some places in the code that you have to be mindful of. If you want to build a new commercial structure, here are things you need to be mindful of, and they're different places. Stuff of that sort, yes, I would think that would be useful. But I think we had probably better go through Title X and make sure that we're satisfied that it's internally consistent. And then we can figure out as a group to recommend to city council that we need some checklists in certain areas. I think that would probably make Sherri's life a lot easier if she could hand people something that was clear and understandable and was obviously not only fact-based but code-based or state law-based, whatever, so that people know what the rules are. All right, let's...
And, and if I, if I could, for those people at home that may not have a clue what we're talking about when we say Title IX or Title X, I don't feel I could articulate that clearly, but I, I have a feeling you can.
That's, that's a good idea. Title, Title, there are ten titles, subdivisions of the municipal code. Title IX is primarily concerned with building standards. That is, the, the construction details of individual structures within the city and, and potentially depending on what zoning area of the city they're in as well. Title X is entitled Planning and Zoning, and it is primarily concerned with zoning, formal zoning rules, residential, commercial, village mixed use or whatever, and, excuse me, and land use. So within certain zones, what kind of buildings are you allowed to put up? If you have a residence, and it's not just what's in the code here, but also we should, we should clarify what's in the state law, which over the last two or three years has made a lot of changes in, in the city's ability to control certain, certain types of activity. Here, we're talking about building accessory dwelling units or building guest houses and accessory dwelling units or whatever. All of that stuff is in Title X. And it, it, like the other titles in the municipal code, is, is a document, a piece of a document with a long history that's been modified many times. The last time I looked, the, the ordinances, not all of them changed the text of the code, but I'd say many, if not most of them, the ordinances were numbered somewhere in the eight-hundred range. And if you read through the, the municipal code, which you can find with a direct link off the city website, you'll find at, at many of the paragraphs, it'll say ordinance number so-and-so modified this. But there's been a lot of changes over the years, and, and every time you change something, there's an opportunity to find an inconsistency with somebody else's change from four years ago or forty years ago. And so I think that is a lot of what we need to try to clean up as an easy first pass and then make a, basically a, a big errata, text amendment, recommendation to the city council.
Basically suggesting, you know, I guess, well, if there's seven of us, and we all take two and there's two left over, you know, we could handle, but basically for all of us to take possibly, what, two chapters?
Yeah.
As an assignment, go through...
And two or three of us need to take chapter two, because here's, here's the...
Right.
Here's Title X, and at least eighty percent of it is chapter two. So the rest of it, what we're talking about, if you take two or three chapters, you're looking at less than ten pages worth of text. But at least make sure that the spelling's good, the grammar's good, the internal references are correct. And then amongst the things that you have read, are they internally consistent? So.
If I could just add one point, I think you've...
Yes, sir.
But the, the one point I really wanted to stress is that I, I think we do a full update, or the expectation is that we do a full update once the general plan update is complete, which would be a, probably most likely a couple-year-long process. And so that was why we had written the, you know, the very brief agenda item stating that this review would be focused on error correction, revision, and, like you said, cleaning up some of the obsolete language and things like that. But just if that helps kind of set the expectation, that was how I had interpreted from council.
It's, it's not a matter of asking individual commissioners to do their own visioning at this point and, and update chapters with that in mind. We'd, we'd like to get, we'd like to get to what's a fairly clean document and then decide what overarching ideas need to be incorporated into that document if they're not there or eliminated from that document.
So we're proofreading, basically?
To a great extent, we are proofreading, yes. Make sure that it reads well, that it's understandable, that it's internally consistent. And this, and references in these different chapters will lead you to other parts of the code. And if they don't lead you to the right parts of the code, then that's something that needs to be fixed. So.
Is it possible, or I don't want, I don't like to waste paper, but should we all have a copy of it? Of Title X, so that if we're going to have to be, if we're going to be looking at a chapter and we have to cross-reference into another chapter to make sure it's, there's consistency, we're going to have to be able to look into, I mean, we, sure, we could do it all on the computer.
If there's a PDF, and the PDFs have hot links, it's easy to jump around or if it, you know, it's referencing.
I've, I've done a lot of that myself lately, and if you pull up, the top line of what you're looking at is Title X, then it lists all the chapters, okay? And if you select a chapter, then it shows the first couple of articles in there, and then you can do show all and you can run through that whole chapter. So I think it's, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Is that available as a, as a PDF to download so we can yellow things out and do what we need to do? So we can actually do the editing?
I'm not sure about that, I've done all of mine online.
Yeah, I've done it online, too. I can, we can look at that, see if we can convert it and get copies out to everybody, so we'll try to do that.
Just, just give us, give us a reference to a PDF copy of Title, of Title X. Then if you find references to other parts of the code, you can just go online at the city website to find those, because we're not going to be changing those, just verifying things.
Make a note, fascinating.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then make yourself some side notes, and we'll all get back together and say, oh, in fact, we should give it all to James and let James circulate it to everyone, and we can all take a look at all the suggested changes. I don't think that we necessarily want to be looking at all of that the first time during a planning commission meeting.
There is a challenge there with the Brown Act, I'll have to think that through. We've run into this issue before, circulating recommendations to make changes from one commissioner to the others and how that can be done legally.
Agreed, okay. Obviously, we want to do this legally, whatever we do.
Yeah, so we'll look at that and we'll figure out a process.
Something we did in the past, John, you'll remember, we did the, the building code several times, and you probably did it more than I did, I did it a couple times. But basically, you know, we, we took it, we, we made our notes, and then we came back to planning commission, and then we, we kind of went page by page. Now, in this case, because we're going to have, each one of us will have individual chapters, but, you know, we're all going to want to look at it, that's going to be the challenge.
You don't want to, you don't want to see it the first time when you have to vote on it.
Right, but you want, you want to come in and you want to read it and say, oh, here's the edit that I made, and... But at the same time, I don't know if we all want to have a blank copy in front so we can look at it, too, to verify or agree or not agree to that, to the edit, I'm, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Are we bringing laptops in and do it, or? I'm just thinking how to, it was easy because we had it in a paper format, we had it in a notebook, and then we went page by page, and then we mentioned what, you know, does anyone have, you know, a comment or, you know, whatever on this page, and then we'd agree to it or discuss it rather.
If it's, if the, if it's a shared Google Doc, we all will be able to see each other's...
There's a Brown Act issue with that, though, unless we just did it at a meeting and pulled it up. But if, you know, when you go into a Google Doc and then another commissioner goes into that Google Doc, they're seeing your deliberation.
So the Brown Act applies if I add a comma somewhere and they see it.
And, and send it to all of us, because in effect, we're deliberating outside of the public eye.
Right.
That's the problem. So we need to, we need to figure out a way to do that, James.
Okay, this is incredibly boring, I must say. I've, I've been through two of these, and it's...
Yeah. Exactly.
Well, it'd be nice to have a more up-to-date way to do it.
James, what is, what is the Brown Act ruling on a subcommittee of three, say? Say, say a subcommittee of three worked on, got together and worked on chapter two?
That's a way to do it, as long as it's a, less than a quorum of the commission, that could be an option.
Well, each of these assignments, if it's, if it's an individual taking chapters, that's less than a quorum, clearly.
Right. Right. So the issue, so less than a quorum can get together and talk about it, or each person can do individual sections. I guess the, either way, then it would have to come back to the full commission for deliberation at some point.
Absolutely, yes.
We're going to have to have a...
Question is, how do we get it back to the full commission?
We'll schedule it as an item to review, I guess, that's, you know, the, that takes care of the Brown Act issue. I think the challenge is the practicality of it. You know, we can get emails of everybody's changes and then put them all together and put them in a, in a packet for that meeting, that, that might be the, the best way to do it. And that would work if one group or one person is looking at each chapter, but if multiple people are looking at the same chapter, then you're going to have multiple versions of that chapter. So, yeah.
I mean, unless it's a group.
Yeah. Chapter two is, is a horrendous task for whoever takes it on. That's why I was thinking it might, might take a group to do that.
So that one could be a, you know...
And within that, we could assign articles within the chapter that we could each work on. But I mean, it's, you know, Title X is like this, and Title X section, or chapter two is almost all of it.
Most of it, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would suggest probably an ad hoc committee for chapter two of less than a quorum that can get together and look at that. And then the rest, I think, a, a commissioner can take a couple of the other chapters and then we'll compile all those and put them in a packet for a public meeting, and then that would...
Can I just ask something? You know, normally, this kind of thing would be staff work. Staff would, would prepare, would go through this and prepare the draft, and it would come to the planning commission. And I recognize that there's, staff resources are scarce, but is there some way to, has there been any discussion of hiring a consultant or something to do this? I mean, has that...
So that's an option, and that's...
Outside, outside person who could go through this and do this? Because if it's clerical and it's finding inconsistencies, that, that should be pretty straightforward. And it shouldn't involve really any kind of interpretation of what is and what isn't. It should just be very straightforward editing and, you know, searching out the inconsistencies.
That's right, time, time-consuming, but not requiring
Right.
A high level of judgment or understanding of the general plan or anything of that sort.
Really, just, no interpretation should be involved, because that's judgment, and that's, to my mind, that's, that's really...
Judgment is a part of deliberation, and we can't do that except right here.
Well, staff judgment, but, but in the end, it comes to, to review by the planning commissions, so.
Yeah, that's an option, and we talked about that previously when we were first talking about doing this Title X cleanup. And, which is also why we had it listed on the last item as being an item for discussion at the meeting in case that was the recommendation, that we'd be able to then say, here's the recommendation that we hire a consultant who would work with city attorney to update it. And, you know, obviously, we'd need some resources to hire the consultant to do so, so that is an option. I think when we talked about it last time, the commission indicated that they wanted to, to look at this, so it's...
I think it'd be a good opportunity for each of us commissioners to get familiar with at least part of Title X. You're right, it doesn't take a lot of judgment at this point, but it is time-consuming, and we don't have a lot of staff time. If it comes to it and we need a consultant and the city council thinks that's appropriate to, to overlay judgment on the entire Title X, then I would say more power to them, but they've got to figure out how to fund it, too. But in the meantime, I think we should do what we can to, to get things cleaned up. What do you think?
I, I, I'm glad you just articulated what you articulated. I don't know your last name, so I can't say Commissioner...
Lottis.
What, you know, I'm, I'm glad Commissioner Lottis articulated what, what she just did, because I didn't quite know how to do that, but I was, I was, it's not like I'm opposed to the daunting task of reading Title X, it's more like, what's the best use of time for this commission, given what the city is faced with and all these very important subjects we've been discussing, which I feel take precedence over...
Over what the council has asked us to do?
Well, overlooking, not what the council has asked us to do, but, but without looking at other options like Commissioner Lottis just pointed out, which I, I think is a very valid point.
Well, I, I would just envision that this should be a pretty straightforward effort. I don't think it should be, I mean, I don't, I don't know how to ballpark a figure, but it should be straightforward, maybe not terribly costly. A, a legislative format would be prepared by the consultant. A, a legislative format would be prepared by the consultant. And that includes strikeouts of anything you're changing.
A redlined version of the document.
Right.
Yes.
The new stuff, you know, a different color or bold or something. And so you see exactly where the changes are occurring. And that, that version comes to the planning commission. And, and that's going to take some time to review all that and make sure we're happy with it. But I don't know. I envision, I would, I would, I just think that's, as Ray said, maybe a good use of, a good way to utilize the commission time. We, we have the review power. We can look exactly where the changes are. You know, discuss it, change it further, whatever. And attend to maybe some, some of the larger, larger issues that the commission should talk to, talk about, so. That, that, I, I don't know. I, that's, that's, I think, how I'm feeling about it.
I think, you made a good point though. That would then come back to the planning commission and the planning commission would review it. So it still would provide an opportunity for, for the commission to review each, each of those recommendations. So that, that's an option.
Anybody on this side of the table want to take on any of this task?
No, I like Commissioner Lottis's proposal. I think it'd be fantastic to have a consultant do most of this and then we can review.
Can staff get back to us on it? I found out if there's, if the city council can approve that. Okay, sorry.
Um, I, I'll repeat myself. Can, can you get back to us, can staff get back to us and let us know, you know, if there's funding for that? I'm in agreement if it really makes sense to have it come back marked up. And then as a commission, we can sit here together and go, then you can go through page by page and go, does anyone have a comment? It's similar what we did with the building code. We had that same process several times.
We did that with the landscape ordinance. Remember we, we had all these iterations with the red lines.
Exactly, yeah. I think it's a better.
Who produced the red line versions?
Yeah, and I think with the building code, the, oh, I think it was the, the building inspector or Steve. I can't think of his last name who did it, but.
Stuart.
Stuart, Steve Stewart had done it, yeah.
Yeah, we can do that. I can bring it back. We'd actually started to look for, at funding when we first started talking about this project. And I think there was funding that we thought could be set aside. Obviously, it would still need approval to, to be used. But I can do that. I can come back and report back on if there's funding available and, and then we can take that to council if the commission desires.
So do we have a motion on how to deal with this topic?
I'll, I'll move that the commission ask staff to investigate preparation of the errors and minor revisions of Title 10 by an outside consultant and report back to the commission.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? Let's have a vote, Sherry.
Merk.
Yes.
Corbin.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Quilisi.
No.
Powers.
Yes.
Lottis.
Yes.
All right, let's move along to item four, future agenda items. And we have a report from staff.
Yes. So the upcoming planning commission meeting is going to be a full agenda, which is why I am appreciative that the commission was willing to take on a couple of these, I don't want to call them housekeeping items, but they were, you know, not the typical items today. We have a design review permit for the yoga studio on nine fifteen East Ohio Avenue on the fifth. We have the.
Although it's determined today it won't make that date.
Okay, so we'll have to strike that actually.
That's going to slide to the eight, to the nineteen.
As well as the hip vegan.
Don't know yet.
Oh, really? Okay. Well, maybe we won't have such a.
They're not, not going to make the noticing deadline or?
Yeah, we, they don't have, there's incompleteness items that have not been submitted to meet the noticing deadline.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so actually, so we'll have the concept review for, for two oh four and two oh six Kenyatta. And if, or what I'd like to do then is the density bonus ordinance, which needs to be noticed, but we can, we should, we'd have time to notice it for the fifth.
You have, yeah, that's three weeks.
I'd like to bring that back. That's an item that council, or I will say, so city attorney had told council that we needed to do and then council approved it as part of their project list. And just, just briefly, it's a new state law that is, would preempt the city's density bonus ordinance unless we make some modifications to it. So we'll bring that back in order to avoid us being preempted by the state. And so it would be just a concept review and the density bonus ordinance.
Okay.
And then the eleventh is the special joint meeting, which we've talked about today and I'll bring, I'll bring that back for just the final review on the fifth as well, the, the list of items. And that's it.
All right. Item five, liaison schedule. We all see our names listed there for monitoring city council or building appeals board or MAC meetings and reporting back. Any questions? Are there any of those dates that are a conflict for anyone here where you'd say, I can't do that? Would somebody else trade with me or whatever?
Yes, October fifteenth, the MAC meeting. I'll be out of town October eighth through twenty-three.
You never know about MAC meetings. There may be one and there may not be.
That's, yes, the intermittent MAC meetings. I'll take it.
There is one scheduled for August twentieth.
October fifteenth, no, I'm going to be traveling that day, so I can't take it. Anyone else?
I'll take my first volunteer position.
All right. The MAC probably doesn't mean anything to you right now.
Actually, I've been to one meeting.
You have been?
The County Ventura General Plan Update.
The Oak View Free For All, we call it, yeah.
I forget when that was, but it's a while ago, maybe last fall.
Okay. So Ray, you'll get the next one. If it happens, right. Okay. Well. Yes, and we didn't, we didn't have any, anything that required a discussion of ex parte comments or anything. We're down to the best part of the meeting, a discussion from our city council liaison. Member Blatts, thank you very much, sir.
Well, it's nice to be here again tonight. Thank you for all your hard work. Welcome to Kathy. You're welcome aboard. The time to close for the, for the city council and mayor election was, for the mayor was last Friday. And our current mayor and Severo Lara are both qualified, so they'll be the two running for mayor. And then because I'm not seeking reelection, it added some time to the council time to qualify and that was till five o'clock today. And my understanding is that six people have qualified for the three open positions, so. I'm sure they'll be, whoever they are will be published soon, so it ought to be a lively debate and election season, hopefully. A couple of things. One is that Title 10, I think, is clearly a procedure, a process that begs staffer or probably a consultant. You know, I don't look to you guys as having to rewrite titles and chapters of our, of our code. First of all, it's very time consuming and we respect that. You're all volunteers and I think we need to respect your time. But second of all, you're not there as being experts in the process of having to rewrite law and particularly going through and trying to clean it up. So I think the recommendation in the vote tonight, having it come back to the council to decide how we're going to accomplish that at your request is the proper way for it to be done. So thank you for your, your thoughts and your comments on that. Talking a little bit about our general plan, it is something that is in the process. I don't know whether a consultant has been hired yet. I can't remember. I don't remember the MOU going out. But generally speaking, the first stage of that, and it may be because Luke is not around, the MOU may not have gone out, but I do know it's funded. I know that it's planned this year, this fiscal year for it to be rewritten. And it's going to be, you know, it's going to need a lot of input as the visioning and things like that. As, as Commissioner Lottis indicated, the visioning process is really part of the general plan. It may be called a general plan, but a general plan is a term of art and it encompasses many segments, including transportation and housing and things like that are all part of it. And when that's rewritten, it's rewritten in a way that also, the term of art, affordable housing is taken into consideration. As well as each year when we have to do our, our housing element, or every two or three years, we have to do the housing element. Affordable housing has to be taken into consideration then as well. And to comment on your, your question, Commissioner Powers, the term affordable housing, while in the layman's, layperson's term, they think, well, this isn't affordable. I mean, what is affordability? But it's not, it's a, it is truly a term of art when it talks about a city and affordable housing. And the way that, the way that it is, is the, they, there's a calculation of what the medium income is. In this case, it would be Ventura County. And then you look at the various percentage of house, you know, the amount of people in a household as to what is extremely low, what is low, what is medium and what is moderate income. And to give you an idea, if it's thirty percent of that medium income, then it's considered to be extremely low income. So if you have an extremely low income project, you have to forecast that the cost of that housing is going to be affordable to somebody that's at thirty percent of the medium income for the county. And then it goes up to, I believe fifty percent is, is low income. And then when you get to medium income, it's a hundred percent. And then moderate income is a hundred and thirty percent. And all those taken as a whole encompass affordable housing. And typically, the way, the reason why it becomes affordable, at least offers affordable, and we are actually as a city, looking at one affordable housing project in which we may be the developer, which we haven't done in the twenty-two years that I've been around dealing with city issues. And that's the, the, the city's property over on North Montgomery Street. And we're talking about maybe doing that as a city development, as affordable housing. But typically what happens is because we have a housing element, that we have to be able to provide X number of affordable housing units, and I think our last housing element required, we have to be able to provide three hundred and twelve or somewhere in that neighborhood. We have various parcels within the city that we put overlays on that allows for affordable housing projects. But typically, they never can be affordable because the, the land itself is too expensive. So what usually happens is the city will work with a company like Cabrillo Development, which did the, the North Montgomery Oaks project. Or People Self Help, which is a company out of Santa Barbara, that came to us with a project on the parcel ten, which is right behind City Hall. And the city donates the land to the project and then the people develop it. And because the land is being contributed by the city, it makes the construction costs or the procurement costs so much less that the construction costs can be done and then it fits into these categories as to whether it's going to be extremely low or low or moderate. So that's kind of the way that it works. And we haven't been able, we have not had one, since our last housing element was done, we haven't had one affordable housing project done. And one of the things that I'm going to bring forward before I leave, and I don't know whether it'll make it to deliberation at the council level before I leave, is part of the reason why the People Self Help project on, on parcel ten, which was right behind City Hall, failed was because it was, it became an issue at the last election two years ago, whether parcel ten was part of the Libby, Libby Park Master Plan. But the Libby Park Master Plan, which was a document that was prepared several years ago, was never ratified. So it's a perfect parcel for affordable housing. And for somebody that's, you know, run for city council on affordable housing twice, that was kind of pulled, the rug was pulled out from under us when it was determined that it was unclear whether or not that lot was available for affordable housing. So if we bring it forward to the council for them to either ratify that general, the Libby Park plan or say, no, we're not going to ratify it, then that might free it up. But we don't have a lot of city parcels that are available, other than this one and eleven, which is where the, where the public works yard is.
Thank you. I, I thought I understood from some of that discussion, which as you say, is, is aging rapidly now, that there was a question about the terms on which the property was donated to the city in the first place and whether it could be turned into something other than a public purpose.
Right, well, there was a definition.
Or did it have to revert to the original owners?
It, it, it kind of turned on two different things, Chair Quilisi. The first one was, was it part of this Libby Park overall plan? That was the first thing that came up. And the second thing is that there was a deed restriction in it, saying that it could only be used as a public purpose, that, that when the Smith-Hopsins donated that land, there was a fifty-year kind of restriction on it. And there was also this idea that it could only be used as a public purpose and it couldn't be sold. Well, if you look at that from just the pure language of what's in that deed, it would seem like, well, how is affordable, how is affordable housing a public purpose? But it was also the same restriction that's on the Little House property. And you could say the same thing for that. How is that a public purpose? Well, I happen to think that affordable housing is a public purpose. The legal aspect of it and definition of it says that affordable housing is a public purpose. It's just whether the council wants to adopt that kind of hard legal definition versus just saying, well, it was donated to us. We don't believe it's a legal purpose and we're not going to use that land. But it clearly is one of the overlays properties that we use to get our RENA numbers that got our housing element approved the last time. So it's an interesting ideal, but, you know, there's no question about the fact that we need affordable housing. But even when you look at affordability, is affordable housing really affordable? That's the question. And that's what I think Ray was bringing up. You guys put so much time and effort into this. I really appreciate it. For Commissioner Lottis's benefit, I sat on the planning commission for ten years, so I'm very familiar with the operations of it. It's, I was on the redevelopment commission as well for two years before that. But John Merk was there when I got on the planning commission and he's still here.
I was just going to say thank you for all your service to the city.
Thank you, yeah. I appreciate that. I've enjoyed every, every minute of it. I, I really had to toy with not running for city council this time, but I'm so busy. And I, in the last couple of years, I've really noticed that my obligations to the city for out, not just the meetings for the council, but the other responsibilities I have has infringed and more and more into my legal practice. And, you know, after twenty-two years of doing this, I said, you know, it's, it's still enjoyable for me, but it is kind of twine. I had to make a priority assessment and say, you know, maybe I need to spend more time in my legal practice than, than giving more time to the city when me opening up the position will give someone else an opportunity to serve on the council.
I think you're, you're on the Gold Coast Transit Board as well.
Yep, Gold Coast Transit Board.
You're donating time outside the city as well.
Yeah, and the frustrating part though was when I was mayor, I was able to spend more time on other things. The city has a major water issue, problem. There's all kinds of water meetings going on and casitas meetings that are important to attend. OBGMA, you know, that I was, sat on for a while and attended. And my time just doesn't permit for me to do those other things that aren't obligations. You know, it's not an obligation that I go to the casitas board meeting, but I used to do it because I wanted to be there. And it's ever been as, as important now to be there as it is before, and I just don't have the time to do it. So that was part of my frustration too. But I've enjoyed every, every moment on all. on all, on both commissions and on the council, that's for sure. I'm going to miss it.
Thank you for your time.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Well, hey, you guys are the ones that are putting in the time, so...
As Paul knows, I attend most of the city council meetings and watch those deliberations, and I know it's very difficult and very time-consuming for you, but thank you for your time.
Yeah, that's, I did it because I felt an obligation to the, to the city because I was here and I enjoyed it. So, anyway, any other questions about anything that's going on? We don't meet again until the 28th.
Eight, and then, and then we all meet on the 11th.
Yeah, we meet on the 11th. Tiny Homes will be coming back to us, I think, on the 28th?
Yeah.
So that'll be a spirited debate, I'm sure.
Have a singer and a public speaker.
Yeah, that's right. We did, a public speaker. Uh-huh. Yeah, it'll be, it's always the same faces, so it ought to be interesting. Thanks again.
Okay. Thank you, sir. And without objection, we're adjourned.